Is it this one?
Yes, USBC.
Oh, that one actually can do that.
I will state for record because we didn't have the station to do that.
Well, we should have, if we're speaking back on, we should have done a pro temp.
Yeah.
So we should.
Yeah. Jane and Carolie, you ready?
Yes. Uh, my Carolie done already.
Am I ready?
I have to get ice for my knee.
All right. At this point, Carolie, everybody can hear everything you say going forward.
Say hi to Jane and Carolie as they.
So, board at this time, we'd like to open our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome all of you joining us in person and those of you joining us online. We have two board members, Director Pushkar and Treasurer Owens, who are joining us online through the means that we're allowed to do to make sure directors are possible to be here through virtual means. So I'd have a motion to approve the agenda for May 28th, 2025, as presented.
Salute.
Motion with Mark, second with Ron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. We have a motion to approve the employee insurance recommendation as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Mark Ponder and seconded by Jane Pushkar. At this time, we'd like to welcome Chief Finance and Operations Officer Carol Embry to present.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much for this opportunity. action. So I will jump into this presentation. I want to identify first that documents have been posted in advance of the meeting for public consumption, for your consumption, to pre-read, and also want to express appreciation for Vice President Greider and Director Ponder, who participated during the Insurance Committee meeting last night. And much of what is included within this presentation was provided to all committee members last night. And then there are additional slides that replicate some of the information that we presented a year ago with the health renewal, and then some additional information for your context as you consider the recommendations. So we covered the total census of employees and at the time of this data, it was 4,0425. I highlighted for the group that we currently do a passive enrollment for our benefits and for all of our employees and retirees and Cobra participants. We will need to move toward an active enrollment, not this coming enrollment cycle, but the next one, because we're required to make a change to our provider. The Smart Bin software that we use will no longer be available to us, and so we'll need to bid that, and we'll have a new enrollment process. So just putting that on your radar, that that will be information that will occur or a change in process that will occur. I provided this for context about our current year estimate on premiums that are going into the health fund. And as you can see, the district is providing approximately 79% of all premiums that are going into the health fund. The remainder is funded by employee-paid dependent care coverage at 12.73%, and then retiring Cobra premiums as well. And that total is $30,357,929. As you well know, we have additionally transferred, by your approval, $6 million from the operating fund into the health fund to provide a balance for the claims that have been at a higher demand this year. This provides the summary of the actual expenditures from the 2324 year. And as you can see, the district splits this into claims and prescription claims, that type of thing, stop-loss premiums, all the administrative fees. We then deduct from those expenditures our stop-loss reimbursements and rebates that we receive from pharmaceuticals. So the net impact overall was just under $31 million in expenditures. But this slide shows that our revenue for last year was $26,239, and the net operation then for the year was negative $4,754,031. This does not include our health savings account contributions that in the current year total at $1.7 million. That would be in addition to those costs. You are quite familiar with this slide that provides you the buckets of funding, and so our operating funds, the operating levy can go into general teacher and capital, but the operating funds are considered general and teacher. And so any decision that is made relative to benefits and the amount that the district contributes to those benefits will impact any future salary negotiations or staffing decisions or other operational costs that need to be absorbed by the district. So keeping that in mind as we journey forward. This is the familiar slide for you as well. This was all presented to the Insurance Committee membership so that they had context too regarding our operating fund balance trajectory, that something needs to be done in the next couple of years to address the downward trend and reduce operating costs or increase operating revenues. Those are the two primary functions. Again, any impact to benefits will impact this line as well. This is that reminder slide two, and a reminder once more about the $6 million transfer and that we are continuing to run short in our balance for the self-insurance fund in spite of the $6 million transfer. And so I do have a recommendation for you at the end of this presentation to help address that in some fashion. But when we compare year over year, we are currently $2.6 million below the fund balance from July through April of the prior year with the $6 million added in. So I did engage with Marsh McLennan Agency representatives, and one of the things that was important for me was that we'd be able to identify for you some of the plan anomalies that are evident. And so I have those summarized here for you. The first one being that, excuse me, the district contributes varying amounts per employee, so we have disparate allocations being provided. Portions of dependent care premiums are paid by the district, and some of those are higher than others, and we'll take a look also at how we compare to other districts. So the district health savings account contribution, not only does the district provide $1,000 for employee-only registrants in the high deductible health plan, but we're also paying $2,000 total, or an additional $1,000 if anyone is enrolled in dependent coverage as well. So those people are receiving a disparate amount, and that's an unusual benefit that is provided to employees. The funds are paid outside of the health fund, so they are impacting operating funds directly. That's an unusual behavior. Usually, the amount is the difference between the base plan and the high deductible health plan, and that difference is what is paid to the employee as an amount. So that amount would currently be limited to $780 a year, and most districts and other entities provide it on a month-to-month basis and not all at one time, because people separating prior to September 30 are overpaid, including retirees. So I mentioned typically that dependents do not cause an employee to receive additional funds. The last item is that the district embedded, high deductible health plan embedded, plan deductible. We're administering two plans. It should be one, and through the proposed design of the plan for the upcoming year, that has been addressed and corrected. This shows varying plan contributions, the teacher example. So the first on the left is representing a teacher making $67,618. As you can see, if they're on the base plan, employee-only, they end up with a total gross plus benefits package of $89,133. If they participate in the family coverage due to the district's contribution to dependent premiums, they have a total compensation package of $97,640. So they receive an additional $8,506. That's 9.54% more than the person on the base plan. On the right side is that same information, only that represents the high deductible health plan. The gap becomes larger, $89,385 if they are on the high deductible plan, and then 101, I'm sorry, base plan, and $101,448 if they're on the high deductible family coverage plan, because they also get that additional $1,000. So overall, they end up with $12,062 more than their counterpart teacher, and that's a 13.5% increase for that employee situation. This slide, I changed it to say support employee. It was labeled para before for the meeting last night. That created a little confusion, just because the amount that we had identified was $32,509. This is a support personnel employee making $2291 an hour, and as you can see, it's the same scenario, only in this regard, because the gross pay is lower, the percentage gap is greater. So the person who is on family coverage as compared to base for the PPO plan is 17.99% higher, and if they're on the high deductible health plan for family versus employee-only coverage, they receive 25.38% more in compensation on an annual basis from the district. This references that high health savings account contribution, and so what we identified for you here is that we have $629,000 approximately. That's the amount being paid this year for dependent coverage, that additional amount that's above and beyond what others may be paying. And I referenced before the separation piece, so anyone who leaves prior to September 30, whether they retire or whether they just sever employment because they have a different job opportunity, they, as soon as they leave, then it creates this gap in terms of what was owed to them, and we pay it all at one time in one check in October. And so we do have people that might sever the very next week, and that means they keep that money, even though it's really contributions that should have been spread out through September 30. Levers to impact district costs noted for you, just some of those opportunities. Wellness efforts always focusing on improving health are a great option. Plan design changes are a regular focus because they don't affect individual costs on a monthly basis necessarily. It's mostly focused on the user. Then reducing or eliminating the dependent contributions by the district, changing that HSA contribution to represent the gap from the base to the high deductible plan. The embedded HSA contribution with health fund piece, again, that would be a low-hanging fruit thing that won't really help us from a dollar's perspective. It would just be a corrective measure. And then reducing or eliminating that contribution for dependents. Employees pay a portion of employee-only costs would be another option for us. Currently, the district pays 100% of all employees for their employee-only insurance. This slide and the next one are corrective slides. During the April 17th meeting, I had provided you information relative to stop-loss coverage and how it was calculated, and this better depicts that, so that's correcting the information previously provided. And same way with this historical renewal perspective, as you can see, our renewals in the past have been very low, 2019, 2%, 2%. I covered all this in the April meeting. I did have an error on the 2021 line. I had 5.7%, and it should be 4% for the district portion of that. So again, our renewals have been significantly low, and that's not where we are today, as you know. So then this information, I'll go through very quickly. I'll pause on one slide mainly. This is the information that Marsh McLennan presented yesterday evening for the Insurance Committee. I will highlight, though, that the forecast was previously 20.7. It did increase to 22.7 using the April 2025 data, and the numbers are always moving. We were hopeful they would go down and not go up, but they did go up. So, but all of the forecasts were delivered based on that 20.7%. So I mainly want to focus on this. This was presented during the May 6 meeting in terms of the plan design options, the levers that could be pushed and pulled to reduce the cost demand on the district budget and also potentially for employees. And so you can see that for our in-network deductible or out-of-network deductible, we're seeing some slight movements on those, and all of that is listed in red, if you're able to actually pull that up on your screen to see it better. It's pretty tiny print, but we did cover this all with the Employee Insurance Committee Group. The next slide shows you the premium equivalents. Again, this was based on the 12.8%. Also, we've updated this to reflect the new information on vision data that's in another slide. This was a 10% budget model, so again, whenever we start talking about this, we were at 8%. We suggested to Marsh McLennan, we'll go ahead and increase it to 10% so that it can be a tolerable effect on the plan design and on other changes that would be necessary. So they did that work, and that was, I believe that was provided following the May 6 meeting. And then again, for the high deductible health plan, then this moves us to Model 2 with the 12.8% budgetary impact to the district for active contributions, and that's the base plan data and the high deductible health plan. So we'll look a little closer at some of this information. Again, it's all posted online. We did review this during the May 6 meeting of the Insurance Committee, and then reviewed it again during the May 27 meeting, just to show how we compare from a benchmarking perspective for both our PPO plan and then our high deductible health plan and HSA plans as well. Marsh McLennan did provide information, and I should mention that those gentlemen are here this evening in the event you have any questions for us, but they provided information relative to the requests for proposals that were issued. We have mandatory bidding requirements, and they help us stay compliant with that. We have vision, vision recommendation, and then life disability recommendations. So that, and that's really tiny, that information was provided, and there's the life and disability information, vision proposals, that information. This is the actual recommendation for dental that we would renew with Delta Dental, as is, no plan design changes. It is a 6.3% increase to the rates. The dental portion of our health plan is very minimal relative to the medical piece, and so it's minimal impact for vision. The recommendation is to move from IMED to NVA, I believe that's National Vision Administration or something like that. Does provide improved benefits at the 17.5% savings, which is approximately $70,000 per year. And then for life and disability, the committee received information regarding that process and the recommendation, excuse me, to renew with the incumbent Lincoln Financial Group. No plan changes and no rate changes on life and disability. So this is new information relative to the recommendation that was not presented to the Insurance Committee, and some of it, again, replicates that which was provided a year ago. The first one being that we are regulated by Board Regulation 4540GE when it comes to how we address health insurance. I've highlighted that middle sentence for you, that middle sentence for you. This is a unique thing in our district. There isn't right and wrong, it's just different, and it creates some unique challenges. But employees may receive this bucket allocation, if you will, of funds that they can then attribute to any combination of medical, dental, and vision coverage for self, spouse, and/or children. So any of those options, they can piece and parcel it together. And so the thing that that does, I'm sure it creates a massive calculation challenge for Marsh McLennan representatives. It also makes it challenging for us when we're looking at data, because people can move around all the time, and it changes the calculations. This reminds us of the services that Marsh McLennan Agency provides for us. I've referenced already the proposal process and then gathering benchmarking data and providing us the data necessary to make recommendations on our insurance fund. This reminds us that we are self-insured, but we also have fully insured plan for vision, and so the self-insured covers medical and dental. Just list some of the differences between the two. And this is some updated census data. It didn't change by much, but just providing you that understanding of how many people are enrolled in each of the types of coverage. So you can see of the 5,00903 total, we have 3,304 that are employee-only, and again, the district pays for all of those coverages. Employee plus spouse, 336; employee plus child, 1,0376; and employee plus family, 887. Additionally, we have retiree and Cobra enrollments of 718. So I'm sharing with you, you know, we had a unique year where we didn't have our typical January, March, April, and May meetings for the Insurance Committee, but what occurred instead was significant engagements through email communications and providing data to the committee members, and how I handled that. We have these different dates where communications occurred, including keeping them apprised of the actions of the board relative to changing policy and regulation, oh three six oh, and also the approval of the bylaws, and then the final approval of the committee membership. And originally, I was providing the communications to those who served previously on the Insurance Committee, and then as soon as those members were identified, then communications were provided to all the new members for the committee. So the committee actually met May 6 and May 27. One of the pieces of information that I had emailed included this comparison for district contribution percentage, and I'd like for you to train your eye to that low box, and that shows us the employee and family base plan coverage. And so what you can see represented here, we did pull it down so it would be larger on this slide. This represents St. Charles County districts, so the five districts in St. Charles County, Francis House, Zumwalt, Wentzville, St. Charles, and Orchard Farm. And as you can see, Francis House listed first there, and when you look at the percentage paid by the employee for the total cost for that plan, for family plan, the employee pays 32%, and the district is paying 68% of the total premium for the employee plus family plan. If you train your eye to go to the right, you can see that for Zumwalt, as compared to our 68% that the district funds, they are paying 35%. Wentzville's paying 36%, St. Charles 56%, and Orchard Farm 35%. I will tell you that when we had some other additional districts in the area that aren't St. Charles County, there are a couple of larger, like Parkway, I believe, is one that pays higher, and Pattonville pays an additional. and Pattonville pays an additional amount as well. So that gives you some context. And then, this is the same information, but it is for the high deductible health plan. Again, the district is showing at 83% of the total cost for the family plan to be funded by the district. Other districts, Zumwalt does not provide one, based on the information provided us. Wentzville's 35%, St. Charles, 55%, and Orchard Farm, 39%. So the district, Francis House School District is paying a significantly higher dependent care coverage premium for our employees enrolling independent coverage. For these next slides, I won't belabor all of these. They're all posted for you. It basically just shows the premiums and the splits. Reminder again that the district pays 100% of the employee only cost for insurance. All of these premium calculations were based on a 12.8% target for the district budget impact, and that also included not only those plan design changes that I referenced previously, but it included freezing the premium, the dependent care premium payments by the district so that while other costs were rising, those would not go up, and that would shift more of those costs to the employee who have dependents enroll for them. So that's employee only. So remember that we had a 68%. I'll show you when we get to the family here. We took the Marsh McLennan data that was provided and added those charts to the four columns to the right to just summarize that in total. And as you can see, once again, we had 68% on the last slide, and this is showing 68.1. So we have it truncating off past the decimal point there on the previous slide. So you can see that the district paid a 68.1. With a 12.8% renewal, that would take the district paid portion down to 63.3% in the middle box. That's the change, and that's the new plan. And then the last box in orange represents the change, and it's showing that we would be reducing the district funded portion of premiums by 4.8%. So again, that highlights all the different plans. All of this information is posted in a separate PDF. And so I want to now focus your attention on some of the costs that this brings to the district for your consideration. So each percentage of increased district health insurance costs approximately $300,000 annually. So if it's 8%, 8 times 300,000. If it's 10%, 10 times 300,000. The budget allocation estimate for FY '26 is currently at 8. And so down below, you can see that we have that information in that chart. I'm showing you a 1% increased health with taxation, and the taxation is that we pay retirement on any health contribution that we're making, not on the dependent piece of it, but on the employee only side. The next line shows you the current budget that has the 8% increased health with taxation of $2,278,483. For the employee insurance committee, on May 27, we were focusing on a 12.8% increased health with taxation, and that would result in a $3,645,573 increase to the budget over current year. And I also am showing you the increase over the current budget estimate in that far right column. So, and when I say budget, we've been in process of developing the budget, but you know that each month, we're providing you with the operating trajectory, and that embeds some of these assumptions that I'm referencing. Then the last line, I'm showing what it would look like if it was a 14% increase, and that's just under $4 million annually of increased costs for the health fund. So 3.987, that would be another 1.7 million over what we currently have in the budget So taking you back to the employee insurance committee and the process, facilitator Jim Reeves joined us for the meeting yesterday evening and guided the discussion. He helped ensure that all questions were asked and answered, requested that as people had questions or observations or concerns, that they also provided possible solutions. And members did express concern with the cost increase that will be placed upon employees, and particularly those with family coverage or other dependent coverages, but especially family coverage, and especially for support staff making less money. And the solution offered was that the district absorb all increases to the costs. Members noted that they would like to revisit freezing the dependent contribution each year and it not be something that is assumed as being the way it will be. Members expressed frustration in the lack of meetings to discuss options. And again, I remind you that information was being provided. We didn't have physical meetings for that, but information was provided. And then members reached consensus that they are not pleased with the options and deferred to administration to make the recommendation to the Board of Education. I should have added on that slide that that's relative to the medical, because this next slide does show you that they did reach consensus on the full offerings that Marsh McLennan provided relative to the Delta Dental, the vision from IMED to National Vision Administration, and life disability to renew with Lincoln Financial Group. So they reached consensus on that, and that is part of the recommendation to you this evening. So, and taking a look at our use of operating funds, I want to make sure that I've said this enough times into a nauseam that every dollar that is spent relative to the health fund is a dollar that cannot be spent on future salary negotiations. It cannot be spent on future utility increases. It cannot be spent on other staffing needs that might be identified in the district. Having said that, we also know that I've kept you apprised about the state adequacy target movement through the budget process, and it was included in the budget. We've shared that. We also have shared that the governor has the ability to line item veto. At this juncture, I do not have any new information that's been signed or not. The governor has until June 30 to sign it. Then the next step will be to wait and watch and see if it's fully funded. So whether or not that will happen, I don't know. Over a year ago, I was suggesting that we budget for 50% of the state adequacy target, not knowing the impacts of Senate Bill 727, and now we have other legislation that will impact us as well. But I want to provide you other context, and that is that as you are contemplating staff increases into the future, that the cost of the step and step equivalency for all staff is approximately $3 million. That the cost of living increase for all staff for each 1% COLA is approximately $1.5 million for the district. And so again, all of these pieces need to be considered. So we've spent a great deal of time discussing this as an administrative team and wrestling with it, and we feel deeply about taking care of employees and doing good by them. And so in the recommendation for you this evening, we want to diminish that burden on the employees by recommending to you not the 12.8% that we discussed with the insurance committee yesterday evening, but recommend a maximum of a 14% increase to the district paid employee premiums. And basically, that would be the comprehensive budget impact. That includes that plan design change that's been previously communicated, and also there will be an impact on the dependent care contributions. It won't be as large as what is demonstrated in all of the illustrations that have been posted at 12.8%. The district, some of that will shift over to the district bucket where those would be paid for. We also recommend that plan design change that includes correcting the administration of two plans into one. That was discussed yesterday evening. And additionally, recommend a transfer. So this is a new and different concept and thing. So I've shared with you monthly about the health fund and that $6 million that we're up to now. And so my recommendation to the Board of Education would be that you would authorize administration at the end of the year, after all bills are paid, that any unused operating budget for Funds 10 and 20 at June 30, that we would have the ability to transfer up to that full amount over to the health fund to help create a sustainable balance. There is no legal requirement on a balance. I think that our magic number currently is approximately $7 million. We should be maintaining $7 million at June 30 so that we're equipped to weather the storm of the new bills and through claims that will be upon us in the new year. So whatever that would be, whether it would be $3 million of unused funds, or maybe it increases all the way up to four or five million, I don't know. We do our best to estimate based on the information that we have, but we don't have a crystal ball to be able to project what that final number will be. So that is an official recommendation as part of this health recommendation this evening. And then lastly, I've included it here to memorialize it, recommend a budget allocation for the '25, '26 fiscal year of 50% of the state adequacy target. A chunk of that would be taken on by the insurance increase. I have one last slide, and these, this would be for future consideration, not currently recommending, but for future administrations and the boards. Consider a strategy to eliminate the $1,000 annual dependent health savings account contribution for dependents. Currently, that totals $629,000 a year. It's above and beyond that which most entities provide. My suggestion would be that you do that in phases and that you would reduce by $250 per enrollee per year until that is eliminated. And then secondly, consider, and I realize there are many nuances to this, but consider a per paycheck distribution of the health savings account so that we're insured that we don't overpay people. And also, through that, the administration could look at moving that into the health fund so that it's being appropriately attributed to health fund costs. I know that any discussion about that would indicate that some people may have health claims and have bills that they need to pay, and they use those health savings account funds to do that. And I also know that, you know, there are, there's the ability to work out payment plans with hospitals and doctors and entities like that that could potentially provide other assistance for them. So I'll leave that with you. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those, or I'll phone a friend and bring someone else to the podium with me.
We have a question for, from Director Pushkar.
Go ahead, Jane.
Carol, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but to answer the balance of the operating funds to the insurance, do you have any idea how many years that we have had zero sum balance in that fund? And the reason I ask that is because if we transfer all those funds, then does that put us in jeopardy for future funds that we might need to, you know, transfer?
Jane, can you repeat that? Sorry, we were trying, I was trying to find where the speaker is. Now we got it, the microphone, she can hear you. Sorry, can you repeat?
Okay. Hi, Carol. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I have a question. So if we transfer, do you have any idea how many years that we have had a zero sum balance, meaning that we have spent every budgeted item in that account? Because if we transfer all of that out, would that put us in jeopardy for future years? You understand where I'm going?
I do understand what you're asking, and that certainly would be taken into account. Currently, the operating trajectory is making an assumption that every dollar budgeted is spent and every, for expenditures, and every revenue dollar budgeted is received. And that's why I wrote the motion, or not the motion, but the recommendation to indicate that it would be up to that amount, because we would also need to take a look at our revenue and make sure that we didn't place the district in a detrimental situation. So that's a great question, and that is on our radar to make sure that whatever we would transfer would not upset the apple cart to keep it simple.
But again, I stress, like you do, the fact that, you know, if we don't meet these budgeted targets, then we're at jeopardy in future years, and that every dollar spent may not be able to, I guess, fund the teacher salaries moving forward, right? It's a conundrum.
It is.
If I could speak to that. Carol, remind me, is the target for us to have 1% to 2% of our whole budget unused? Anything more than that, we're not budgeting right. But the idea is there's a certain sweet spot that we're aiming for that you're considering when you talk about this recommendation.
So in simple terms, ideally, by fund, we have requested the board approve a budget that covers all of our expenditures. There's never a perfect science, and especially when you're talking, you know, you know how many employees we have and all the transactions that are occurring on a daily basis, schedules that they're working, that type of thing. It's very hard to pin that down. We monitor it on a monthly basis and do forecasting. But to answer your question specifically, if I'm hitting a 2%, I'm doing very, very well on overall budgeting for the operating fund. We can see that that doesn't always work out that way, and sometimes things cross the year, that kind of thing. So that can affect the final outcome of that. We did recently run some numbers, and we saw that in the past, there was excess budget that was available in the operating fund, but the last few years, we've really pulled that down deliberately so that we have a better understanding of what we really are working with. And currently, we are anticipating some unused salary and benefit funds, but until those final checks occur at the end of June, we won't have clarity on that.
When, when would these changes go into effect?
So our plan year begins October 1 of each year. It's October 1 through September 30, and that affords us time by having this approval now. Not only do we include the appropriate budgetary impact in our budget recommendation to you, but the team begins working on all the communication materials for the open enrollment process that will take place, I believe, August. I asked, and I've already forgotten, maybe August 5 or something.
And this is just a, when we were making that annual payment versus coming out of every, like, monthly paycheck, was there some kind of a discount that came with the annual payment so that we're not losing anything?
Well, no. I mean, there's no discount. It's basically a check that is distributed to the employee directly for their health savings account, and we don't have access to that, but it becomes their money instantly when it's paid. And IRS prohibits that we would do any kind of corrective payroll to pull back that which they shouldn't have been paid.
And to be clear, we're not recommending that change at this time. It's something to consider in the future. I would say, though, based on the concern of the committee, that some people plan ahead to have things done in October when they receive those funds, that this decision being made much earlier would allow employees to plan ahead, knowing that in, you know, if they had six months to plan, that it's going to become a monthly, the sooner the better.
So your, your ending balance, the medical self-insurance fund, the ending balance is $552,000 right now.
That was reported in May.
Which is, and what'd you say the ideal target would be?
7 million is the number in my head right now. Six, seven million. We'd be delighted with 5 million.
So we're a little bit short there.
We're a little bit short, yes.
So with that being considered, what you're wanting, the 14%, does that in any way address that deficiency there?
Anything that we're talking about relative to this renewal only addresses anticipated claims for that year. It does not address any deficit fund balance.
How do we address the deficit fund balance?
So part of it...
Because my concern would be is, correct, we make this change now, or within in October, having to make another transfer. I mean, we transferred, what, $6 million over the last year?
Right.
What we're looking to address now, how do we address that shortfall?
It definitely needs to be kept at the forefront of all conversations. It will be more telling once we know how much budget we might be able to transfer over, and then that will potentially set us up for better success in the year. And then we will continue to watch the performance of the plan. And keep in mind, you know, this information relative to the renewal and how much we need to increase costs is based on our claims experience. So if magically, we didn't have the same level of claims in that upcoming year, then we will see that balance grow. I would encourage the board and administration that if you ever see it, for whatever magical reason, grow crazily, pay your operating fund back, that which you transferred. So before you would make any other radical changes.
I'm going to share, Vice President Kreider and myself were part of a conversation today with MSBA. They do a monthly conversation with presidents and vice presidents of different school districts. They do a monthly conversation with presidents and vice presidents of different school districts. And they were bringing up the question about the fully funded amount and whether or not each school district is planning on receiving the whole amount. And what we heard was that two-thirds of the people who knew whether or not the district was planning it or not planning it, two-thirds were planning on not receiving the whole amount. And again, not, it's not just the fact that other people are thinking the same thing that makes it right, but it's helpful for me to know that there's a lot of wise people who are saying, I know they're saying there's a full amount that's been approved by the states and the state house, and yet there's multiple things the governor can do to reduce money in other ways so we don't get the full 6.4 million.
Right.
And so that was a conversation I know Vice President Greider wants to mention, but it was helpful for me to know that, again, two-thirds of the districts represented in that meeting through a poll identified that they're not planning on the full amount. They would love to receive it, but they're not basing their budget upon it.
Right.
So just to build on that too, because I didn't realize this, still learning a lot, that even if the governor signs, that doesn't mean he has to fund it, because they watch how revenue comes into the state, just like we have to continue to watch, based on our forecast, the revenue that's actually coming in to us so it can trickle down and recap it still. So you put a reasonable, seems like also popular, 50 percent guessing that we will get 50 percent of that 6 million SAT, but the reality is that we may not get even that 50 percent, right?
Correct.
So what happens if we don't get that? What suffers? Like, I know we've got, like, this is all coming out of the operating fund, so whether employees, you know, whatever the district absorbs, ultimately, the district is all of us, right? It's our teacher hires, it's our teacher salaries, it's our teachers, you know, everything else. It's, it's all the operating, the district, right? So if we don't get that money, what, what is that affecting? Like, where are we, what's paying the price then? Because something has to.
And our largest costs, of course, are our people, and that's why I've said it multiple times, that this will absolutely heavily influence the ability to do that which we would want to do when it comes to salary negotiations, by spending this additional money on the benefits piece and not taking a larger reduction on dependent contributions, that type of thing, the pieces that would normalize us, if you will. So it would, it would just ultimately, from my perspective, that you don't get at this through pencils and paper, right? It's always the people, all that comprises 80 percent of your operating budget, so.
Can I add to that too?
Yeah.
That next week is the budget hearing, and our intention all along has been to bring a balanced budget to the Board of Education. And that budget, Ms. Embry and her team and working with all the leaders throughout the district, was basing that when we were not anticipating receiving the SAT at all. And so that's where we started. So this discussion tonight, though, the one slide, 50, showed that with this 14 percent increase, it's about 1.7 million over what we built in the budget. So is there a little bit of risk there? There is. We also feel it's a reasonable risk because we have generally recaptured, like Ms. Embry said, three to four million each year. We're hopeful that some of the SAT, additional SAT, will likely be funded, and so it's not irresponsible to make this recommendation. It's more of that long-range planning, understanding the impact this has over the next several years, because once we commit these funds this year, we generally don't lower the amount of insurance we're providing to employees from a cost standpoint that only goes up. And so these costs, just like salary, are now built into the budget and won't go away in future years.
Thank you. So when we meet on the budget proposal, that budget will be based on the 50 percent SAT assumption, based on if it passes the 14 now percent, so we bump that a little bit? Is that because, how can I phrase this? So I know there are administrative, or I know there are asks for resources, additional teacher, you know, staff things that we need that will be presented and that we review. Was this bump made within a threshold so that we can still plan to staff the roles that we know are dire, in dire need of? I know we need a lot more than we have, but the fact is, we've got to find other revenue sources somehow, right?
That's right.
To be able to get the additional things that we want. So I know those are tough decisions to make, but is that...
All that we have planned up to this point in time remains within the budget recommendation, and we will develop the full budget based on that, and also increasing the health from the 8 percent budget to the 14 with your approval, and then also placing in the state adequacy target increase at 50 percent.
So assuming that we get that 50 percent, that we should maintain that balance budget, assuming, I know there are lots of levers, but, okay. Thank you.
And I would like to mention, Director Harmon, just to remind everyone here and in the public, that our financial institutions tax has been quite sporadic, very erratic, I think is more the word I should use. And I've shared with the board and the public that we should never budget for that in advance. We're not budgeting for that. That could be another opportunity, that if we had a spike in financial institutions tax, like we've had in the past, that those dollars could be then allocated to shore up the fund, and assuming that we get to the point where we've levelized our, our annual process in terms of claims and revenue covering them.
So why don't you make sure I heard this right? So the 14 percent would be an overall increase of 1.7 billion to the budget?
Right.
1.7 above 2.2 that was built in already at 8 percent.
Right. Okay, so I hear an increase of 1.7 million.
You're, you're correct, over what we shared, yes.
Okay. So I'm just looking back. Our, our fund balance, at the end of '23, if I'm looking at this right, just shy of 6 million. Fiscal year '24, we're just over 3 million. This last year, we're at 500,000. So it seems like we're losing two and, shouldn't say losing, we're shorting ourselves 2 and 1/2, 3 million per year on this balance, when we need to be going the other way.
We do.
Plus the 1.7 million. So I imagine that's those sort of stuff you're going to be considering in this, in your budget, that you're going to be proposing in the next couple of weeks as to, I'd be curious as to how you're going to address those shortfalls.
Well, and, again, as Dr. Rumpus just referenced, when we look at the budget for the recommendation for the coming year, we're focused on a balanced budget. But in the years out, and that's why we see this downward slope, that is truly where we need to identify other ways to gain more operating revenue, or there need to be some significant changes made in terms of operating expenditures. And from what I see, I don't, I don't see that low-hanging fruit readily at all in this district.
Yeah, it's just, it's just curious how you're going to address that. And then the other thing that I thought was curious was the HSAs. Why is it we do it as a total at the beginning, when everywhere, anybody I've talked to that I'm familiar with, it's 100 bucks per check or to whatever they're deducting, whatever they're choosing up to their max? How do we, how would that go about getting that changed?
And that would need to be explored more deeply. I currently don't have an understanding if that's part of any collective bargaining agreement, but my understanding is that it was an advocacy based on employees that were needing the funds all at one time early on in the year. That was the reasoning.
Director Harmon, back to your last question. I think you were talking about specifically the fund balance and the health fund dropping over the past several years. And I, I think it's just important to highlight this slide, and I shared this last night at the meeting, but, you know, since 2019, when we look at our increases, 2 percent, 2 percent, 4 percent, 3.9, I think the reality is, our costs ended up exceeding that. In reality, those each year should have been higher. If we had been doing 8 percent increases each year, we wouldn't be talking about 12 percent, 14, or 22.7 percent that needs to happen this year. And so in an ideal world, this is a little bit of a correction year, and while I'm sure they will still continue to go up, maybe it's not this extreme, but, you know, we're always looking back at claims as they come in, and it's, it's always a moving target. But you're absolutely right, that monitoring that health fund separately, seeing that significant decline, because we can't be in a position of continuing to transfer significant funds back into that account.
Understood, agreed.
So earlier, you were planning on 8 percent increase, and then we had a conversation about maybe 10 percent, and you had conversations with us about what our appetite was, 10 percent, 12.8, and the recommendation is 14 percent. And numbers are numbers. Can you share, like, what led to wanting to go up to 14 percent?
Right.
Was it just because the numbers looked that way? Or did you hear anything from the employees saying, is there any conditional way to help? So instead of doing 8 percent, now it's 14?
Right.
Because, like, the admin list, was that, was that part of that process at all?
So...
In other words, was that an important part of your process to hear from employees in developing the 14 percent number?
It was, and, and I will say, that was the, the conversation during the employee insurance committee meeting yesterday evening, was just the real concern of certain employees, many employees, bearing the cost of the additional dependent coverage that, that will occur for them effective in October. And, you know, while it's a few months out still, it takes a while to communicate all that out, we need to be committed to that, but just that, that burden on an annual basis of it being in excess of, I need to turn, if I look at the employee plus family, that increase...
232.
Thank you, thank you.
Which was just $30,000 a year.
So that was, that was the why. That was why we struggled with it. We understand the implications of a recommendation that takes away future operating fund utilization. We just hope that everyone remembers that when it's time to have those other conversations.
So just so I'm clear, the $232 a month that you just referenced would be what people would lose more of, like, they're losing?
Correct. So that was specific to the base plan employee plus family?
Family.
If on that specific plan at 12.8 percent, it was a 232 hour increase per month to the employee specifically, so 2784 over the course of the year, in premium costs.
And then if we do the 14 percent, how much would that...
We don't have those specific numbers at this time. We just know that it will reduce it.
It'll be less.
And that work will take place over the next few days by the Marsh McLennan team. Our intention would be that we would provide you, well, we would address the budget for the budget recommendation. We would also potentially post the employee premium information as information to share with you and others, and then continue the process of developing out all the communications relative to that.
I just want to say thank you also for gathering the specific comparatives for the districts, the neighboring districts. I think that's helpful. I know they presented in committee last night, just note about the whole, across the whole Midwest and St. Louis region and then, you know, everything, so that was helpful too. I also appreciate the deep digging to try to balance. I know you have a relatively impossible ask here to try to make everybody as happy as possible and protect the district, especially with the massive amount of volatility we have right now for our state and federal funding. Like, it is, it's a terrifying thing.
Very uncomfortable.
A big, big responsibility that we have to think about. So I know this has been very difficult on you. I know it's going to be very difficult on our teachers, on our families. So I just want to acknowledge that, like, it's just a really tough situation, and not as an excuse, but just an explanation as well. I think everybody is feeling this outside of districts too, talking Medicare, Medicaid. It's everywhere in the insurance industry and just in all of the costs. So I know it also feels, because it is just another chip. So I just want to throw that out, that I see that, I feel that. But I've also, I think we've all spent a lot of time with you really digging in and asking some really tough questions about how these numbers are coming together, and I know you've been very thoughtful and really done a great job, I think, of balancing your district responsibility and, you know, human empathy for the situation. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that, and I acknowledge the entire team that has worked. Julie Walsh is in, in the audience as well, and I appreciate her, her efforts, and Yara Pogies, our benefits manager, and of course, our broker team helping with all of it. Can't do any of it without your support, so thank you.
Want to ask if Director Pushkar or Treasurer Owens have anything they want to add? Want to make sure we make a space for your last questions or concerns, observations? If you're okay, just give me a thumbs up.
Thanks, thank you for the information. I appreciate it.
Yep, always, always a wonderful presentation, very concise, very informative. Thank you, Carol, for all you do.
Anything else? Okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. What, can you remind us of voting on?
This is just to approve the report, right?
The recommendations as presented. So there was the recommendation from the employee insurance committee for those ancillary services, and then the administrative recommendation that included the comprehensive list in, not only health, but addressing fund balance with the motion.
So a motion to approve the employee insurance recommendation as presented.
Second.
Motion by Amy, second by Director Ponder.
Wait, hold on. Sorry, we already did the motions. Now you guys just have to vote.
Right. Thank you for correcting me on that. So again, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Our agenda does not have a place for superintendent comments or board comments. I want to say that, again, thank you for your time. This took an hour because it was worth the time, and that is a representation of all the time behind it. I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation today versus adding that to the June 5 meeting. And as we share this, there are certain things we need to be able to affirm. One is that nothing in this conversation addresses past fund balances. It's all about what's facing us. We're a self-insured plan, which means we also carry the risks of claim fluctuations. Also, dependent care, even with the change, would be the highest in the county, highest percentage. We fully fund the employee insurance for them, and that the admin, through listening to employees in different venues, changed their recommended increase from 8 percent increase to 14 percent increase. And want to make sure all of those were caught and captured as we consider this. And with that, I think it's time, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn open session.
So do.
Motion by Director Ponder, seconded by Director Harmon. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.